Okay, I'm calling to order the Phoenix City Council meeting of July 7th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Mewhoffer?
I'm here.
Counselor Cambros?
Here.
Counselor Vermillion?
Here.
Counselor Suetos?
Here.
Counselor Chester?
Here.
Counselor Shunk?
Here.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes, here.
We have a call.
Okay, great. We have pledges of allegiance. Would you stand? And Virginia, your lead.
Well, I don't. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people of Texas, Kansas, one nation, united up, united in this tall, fair, and just. Thank you.
All right. First thing is something wonderful. It is the oath of office of Michael Sharp. Michael, would you stand up, please?
Sure. I'll bring this, I'll bring this up.
It's gonna have your key down.
I can only do like three words at a time.
All right.
Okay, so raise your hand again. I am Michael Shump.
I am Michael Shump.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution and laws.
To uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And the charter of Oregon citizens of the city of Phoenix.
The charter of Oregon citizens of the city of Phoenix.
And to carry out my duties to the best of my ability.
To carry out my duties to the best of my ability.
By the consent of the city council and by the authority vested in me as city reporter, I am therefore to be duly appointed council member of the city of Phoenix.
Thank you. Wonderful.
I was waiting for the second time.
All right. Public comments. I don't have anyone sign up for general comments. Rosa, do you have anybody on Zoom that wants to? Nope. All right. Very good. No, that's not general comment. All right, we will move ahead then with the consent agenda, which contains the minutes. Unless someone has something to approve, I'll take a motion for consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Cambros? Counselor Suetos?
Yes.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, very good. All right, we're moving on to new business A, which is Resolution 1143, Resolution of the City of Phoenix Adopting the 2025 City of Phoenix Park Master Plan. Mr. Zach Moody is up to tell us about this great and very long and very interesting document that is needed by our city, and we're happy to see it. Please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So what I presented for you was a staff report that just really basically laid out the the organization of the plan, the main goals of the plan, the details, some of the plan updates and details, and then the public engagement process, which the public engagement process was pretty robust with this, as we've talked about a number of times. I think the final total of surveys received were 309 responses. Those were complete and incomplete. Some answered some of the questions, some put their name in there, didn't put anything, and then some answered all of it. So, but what we were able to do is to take that information along with the various workshops that were held, which were very successful, and take all of that information and culminate it into one plan. Specifically, this plan update, just to remind the council, this plan update was to, for the purpose of bringing in PH 3, this is the area between Medford and Phoenix on Highway 99 and PH 5 on North Phoenix Road, were required by Oregon planning law to, or Oregon land use planning, to update our comprehensive plan to reflect areas in which are annexed into the city. And so when we knew we were going to annex those areas into the city, we applied for the grant to the park master plan so that we can update this plan. This, like all of the other plans we have, will start, we will need to start going through them, the transportation system plan, the public facilities plan, the park master plan, the stormwater master plan, all of these things will have to go through to account for the new areas that we have. But for now, we started with the park master plan. It was, is now nine years old, was done in 2016, adopted in late 2016, early 2017. And so really, the focus of the update was on developing locations or potential locations for parks in those urban expansion areas, and then really trying to understand what the public wanted as it pertains to amenities within those, those areas. And as you can see from the plan, it's a little bit different in PH 3 than it is in PH 5. PH 5 is more of a regional park kind of idea, a lot more open space. There's a lot more open space for fields and things of that nature, where in PH 3, there's already a lot of land that's devoted to development. And so anything we try to find there is going to really be parcel, you know, taking parcelized pieces of land and putting them together to create what it is that we're looking for. So those were, those were two main things. And then the third main portion of the update was the refining of the previous Civic Center wetland plan that we had that was done in 2017. And so just a little history on that. So that property was actually deeded to the city exactly for that reason back in the 50s, when Bear Creek Drive was built. Once it was built, the city took over a little piece with the idea that it would be some sort of natural area. There was no concept planning done or anything at that time. And then there was some concept planning done in early 2000s, and then again in 2016, 17, and maybe 18, when this building was being constructed. So the plan that we're presenting to the council today takes basically what was presented in those, in those previous plans, refines it with today's community needs, and you have what we believe is a pretty nice concept plan. But what I will say about the concept plan is that that's all it is right now. It's a concept plan. You know, when we're ready to get, when we get the funding, if, you know, if we are awarded the funding from the Oregon Parks and Rec Department, then we go into the engineering drawings and trying to refine that plan and make sure that it works. The park master plan is, is, is full of concept ideas. It's a vision of what it is that we want to see in the city. It's not the decision-making document. The decision-making document will come from this in the form of a comprehensive plan. So once the council adopts this plan, I can take this plan and start working with the Planning Commission to update a very, very old park element. 1996 is when the park element was last updated. And so we can take the goals and the, and the ideas and all of these things, and we can implement those into policies, put them into the comprehensive plan, implement, or put them into policies that are adopted into the zoning ordinance that require developers to do certain things with parks or develop parks or parks of certain sizes, things of that nature. So this is really the first step, the overall vision of what the community wants. And now it's our, once the council adopts this, it's, it's our responsibility from the Planning Department to take this to the Planning Commission and come up with a set of policies, goals, policies, implementation steps, and strategies to accomplish what's in that plan. And we've already started some of that work. It was part of the grant. So we took advantage of the funding that we did have left over from the university to do that. But we haven't worked on it anymore at this point because we need to make sure that the council is, wants to adopt this plan. I don't see a reason why it wouldn't be. But before we spend that time and effort to do that work, we need to make sure that the vision is what it is that we want. So, so all that to be said, the document is pretty big. We think we got most of the, the text errors and grammatical things out of there, but I will give it one final look through again, just to make sure we didn't spell Phoenix wrong again a couple of times. And, you know, just some tables that were, that were mislabeled. So, so with that, I can answer any questions. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at the plan. And don't quiz me too much. It has been a few weeks since I've looked at it.
But before the council starts, I just have a general question to, to, I guess, understand the structure. So we approve it, and then it goes to the Planning Commission. And also, you're doing a process of applying for a grant based on this plan, correct? That we approve it, and then you move forward. Could you explain how that all interfaces so we understand?
So we, we submitted the grant application to Oregon Parks and Rec with the fact that we had a 2017 concept plan and that we were working on and hoped to have this plan adopted before I go present to the state at the end of this month. So there's, there's a sense of urgency to get it adopted so that I can go up there with confidence to say that, you know, the plan has been adopted. But with that said, yes, so I, I said, yes, we're working on the park master plan. They're well aware of it because they funded it. And once it's adopted, then we will, we will be able to fully use that plan to try to secure the funding. As far as the Planning Department or the Planning Commission goes, this, this plan itself won't go to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission hasn't seen this, that this is the council's vision for the park system. The Planning Commission had input through the, you know, through the same means that everybody else did. What the Planning Commission is going to do is they're going to take this plan, once you've adopted it, and we're going to take and we're going to extract out the visions and create goals and policies that we can implement over the course of the next five or 10 years. Some of those may even be included in the strategic plan as we go along.
Okay, okay. I better understand. Okay, we can go around the table. Larry, go ahead. Scott.
I don't really have any questions, but I just want to commend you and the staff for putting this together and, and the, just, just the, the way you got feedback and, and it was really very comprehensive. And it's a great vision and for the city to move forward with these, these, these ideas. I appreciate particularly the volunteer program that's outlined in the, the document. And I really feel that with citizens participating at that level, it's just more of a, a connection with, with the parks. And it's, it's going to be, with that connection, it's going to be a great success in developing it. I was amazed, though, at the, I think in the, in the document, it said that our population has about a 20%, 20% of the population with disabilities. And I'm glad that that was brought out because that will impact the way parks are developed. Thank you for doing that. So I think that was all.
Nicole?
Yeah, I have many questions. It was really a comprehensive plan, and I was really impressed. I was like, wow, this is done really well. And just like what Larry was talking about, the disabilities or like the Hispanic population or different things like that. And I think the outdoor education outreach is really important and the parking at Blue Heron Park. And yeah, it looks great. It looks really well done.
I remember that we had discussed if we were going to fund this and, and if the grant money would pay for it. What a, what a nice way to use that money. It's great.
I got one more question, but go ahead. Oh, so I think just for clarity, the grant, if approved, is for the area behind the Foudery and the Civic Center, right? So everyone knows that, that's the focus of, of the grant. I forget what you call it exactly, but.
Yeah, from First Street, basically north to what would be Third Street if it went to the end of the wetland there.
Okay, so, and that's really the next area, I think, that needs to be cleaned up and, you know, in our natural wetland area downtown, so.
Well, and there was a big economic focus of that, too. I mean, the, the idea, the idea behind creating an amenity that is unique to Phoenix, for one, the boardwalk being the, probably the most unique component to it. If, if it can completely be funded, it's a very large portion of the expense of a project. But to be able to be down at the wetland level instead of being up, just overlooking it, is a huge, is, it's a huge amenity for the city to have and will bring people in, we believe, so.
Okay, the other thing I would just want to add, there is no garden club in Phoenix. There was a garden club, but it basically disbanded itself a few years ago. And I know it's mentioned in the, in the plan, but unfortunately, it's not there. Maybe it'll be resurrected in the future. Some of the things I liked to mention, the Phoenix Art Council, to mention the Historical Society, to mention skate parks. And in the past, we did have a parks coordinator, and that position went away. And I believe the reason it did is because we needed more people in the field under public works. And that was the reason that went away. And I find, again, it's being recommended that we consider that in the future. And we'll see how that goes. I think emphasis on seniors and young children is important. Programming, everything that was mentioned in here are, are issues that were in my mind, and, and they were addressed. So I really feel it's a well, well-rounded plan for the future.
And to, to your point on that, on the staffing, you'll notice in the plan, too, there's some really rough cost estimates of what things will cost fund. And that's important as we, as we move forward. We've already had a conversation, maybe not with this entire council, but with previous council, about what park fees look like and what the park utility fees look like in order to, to pay for the capital improvements and to pay for the ongoing maintenance. And, and that includes staff. So, so those are important aspects. And although they are really rough numbers, they're, they're, they're based on, they're based on good data. And they will change, of course, as the plan ages, but it's a good starting point for it.
Yeah, and, and given the number of people that are in our parks, I was just talking to Susan about it, and, and she's over there all the time with her dog. And just the variety of people, I mean, this is so important, and I believe they will fund it. I think the, our population will fund it because it's, it's fat critical for them. So, yeah, this is a win for everyone. Virginia? Nothing? Oh, yeah, you have some now. Okay. Very good. I misunderstood. Have it, have at it.
So I have a couple of questions. So like, when we get to the point where we are choosing what's in the parks, like, for example, a splash pad costs a lot of money. Like, are there different types? Will we get to see like the choices? Or is somebody else above us making those decisions?
Well, I think the very, the next step will be for, the next step is finding the place for the park, especially in PH 3. PH 5 is probably a little bit, going to be a little bit more defined by how the developer develops that area. But that's why it's important to get the plan adopted and get the, the policies in the comp plan so that we can leverage the policies that we have in the comp plan to the developer when they come in. So if PH 5 develops as its employment center, as we intend it will, then we want to make sure that we can capitalize on the requirements of that developer building that park for the city. It's at that point, that, that one may be a little bit more, we will have a concept plan, you know, we'll, we'll work to do a concept plan for PH 5 and a concept plan for PH 3. We did not do that in this plan because we didn't have the park area identified. We had the general park acreage identified, but PH 3 was much more challenging. And it's, where do you put the park? There was not an answer to that question. And as soon as we get this adopted, then we will go and we'll start looking at those. That'll be the next step, is to look at the, the area where a park can be. And then once we identify where that can be and we acquire that park land, then we can start doing the conceptual planning for that. And then it'll be the same process that we went through for the conceptual plan for the, the Civic Center wetland, which was a, you know, the surveys that we did were very heavily focused on what people would want to see in those areas. And, and natural areas were one of those things that people want to see. So we'll identify, we've kind of identified in the park master plan now what, what it is that needs to be there as far as like, generally speaking, you know, PH 5 will be a lot of open space and trails because it can be. PH 3 will probably be more neighborhood type park with playgrounds and, you know, maybe some sort of building or, or dog parks or a small splash pad or whatever. But those, those things will be defined in the future through a different process.
Yeah, because I was, I was wondering, like, is the budget, does the budget cover like all the parks present and future to be built, or does each park get its own budget?
So we will take, when we do, when we present to the council a proposed fee for parks, which I will say again, the, the residents supported an increase in parks fees based on the survey. Now, it was only the 300 that did the survey, right? There's 4,000 people that live here, 4,500 people that live here. So, but people generally supported an increase, a small increase to fund parks. So some of that goes to capital improvements and some of it goes to ongoing maintenance. It, it's not park specific. It just goes into the park fund. And then it's allocated to, really to maintain those and to do some small capital improvements as, as we can, as we can do those. But the, the more that that fee is increased, the, the more money that is raised on the utility bill, the more that we can do with the parks. But there's a balance, right?
Yeah, I guess I would just, I'm thinking about like, how can we get the most bang for our buck? You know, like, if we want these, we want a skate park, and we want a splash pad, and we want tennis courts or whatever, it's like, how can we, you know, get the most things on our wish list?
Yeah.
Budget-wise, I guess, you know? So like, are we going to have options to choose or is that, is that the parks department?
Yeah, when we get to that point, we'll probably have a range of, this is what a splash pad costs, between, you know, $500 and $700,000. This is what a skate park costs. This is what a, you know, a community building would cost to build in a park.
Yeah, like, how do we shop for our parks?
Yeah, I mean, but again, it's going to be a range until you get the concept plan. But at least you'll have an idea. And, and, and you may, you may go back and have to update your park fee again in a couple of years to account for what that, what that vision actually came out to be.
Got a few things. One, thanks for gathering all this information. I love surveys and, you know, concern the sample size is a little small. We've got roughly 4,500 people here, and there were 300 respondents and about 150 that did the digital survey and then showed up to the community meetings. That's three and a half to, three and a half to 7% of the population. So it's kind of tough to extrapolate from there, but I think there's some things we can pull out of it. The other thing I noticed is the survey responses didn't equal the cultural makeup of Phoenix. So I wouldn't call it an accurate represent, representation of everyone in our community. So I think we need to keep that in mind is, as these decisions are being made, are we speaking for all families in Phoenix or just the ones that have access to submit digitally? Because not all families have that access as well. There were community meetings, they could have shown up too, but.
And there, yeah, there were a number of printed surveys in both English and Spanish that were distributed as well. And there were a lot of meetings at mobile home parks that we handed out information to. The sample size is small, but I will say that it was about 30% more than what the university has gotten in any city this size.
Yeah, we reached out and did even ice cream socials, asking, having events and saying, here, you get free ice cream if you fill out this survey. Like, we, we really tried.
And I think you'll find when we get to, when we get to the refinement plans, that people are more interested in actually being able to have their hands on what something looks like rather than the policies that are behind it.
Sure.
And I, I mean, it's the same as true with the transportation plan or anything else. You know, the boring parts of it, nobody want to be, nobody wants to be parts of. But when you, when you come and you say, this is what we're going to design and we have a chance to build it, I think you'll, you will get more people. You know, we, we did, we did everything from handing out cards that prays for people to, to scan to handing out the digital, or excuse me, the, the printed forms as well, so.
Well, thanks. That sounds like a lot of effort running to that. The things I pulled out of it, one were environmental education, which seemed really big. And then the number one group that was reported to be underserved were youth and teens. So as we're moving forward, just kind of keeping, how are we going to create this space to support, you know, the quality of life of youth and teens as well?
Right. Yeah, and it's about getting them involved in, in the space in which they want to use. And so we hope with the, we hope with the Civic Center Wetland project that we're going to be able to incorporate a lot of what the construction, the construction department, I want to say department, but that's what it is, the high school, that group of people can help out and do, or the environmental people that are, the environmental studies that are at the school, or, you know, really reaching out to them and getting them involved. So we really hope that when we come and refine this plan or we, or we have a project that's very specific to something that this high school can participate in, that they will, and that they'll have some ownership and, and hopefully use it. Now, there's also the, you know, the need for the skate park and the need for the splash pad and the need for the soccer fields or, you know, outside space or indoor space.
The balls, number one.
Pickleball, yeah, pickleball space, so, or multipurpose spaces. So I think it does a good job of laying out all of the needs. And as Counselor Suetos and Dixon said, you know, the, the aging population as well was well represented. And it's, it's, it's not all just about the equipment they can use. It's about the amenities that are there, that are sometimes really simple to, to install.
True. Well, thanks for all the work on this.
Yeah.
If I could just, quick, I just wanted to mention, so we all remember when the Blue Heron Park Playground was burned down during the Albiada fire. And I, I mentioned that because I think it can be really a great example of, of how we got the community together. You know, if you were around, you'll understand that there was a lot of the things that were given by the business Home Depot, for example. I mean, there was a lot of, we, we won a grant, I think it was $50,000, it was nationwide, with one of the cell, cellular one.
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile. Just, there was a lot of that. And then there was a committee that came up with fundraising efforts. And, but at the end of the day, unfortunately, we've got most of it paid for by FEMA and the state. It was over a half a million. But it included all the things that you would see for handicap access, if they replace the chip, the wood chips with, with the foam pads. I, I only mention it because it's, it's expensive. And I think I read today where the city of Medford is going to be building a $1.8 million pickleball court, at which we'll make it the largest in the valley. So anyway, it's definitely, it's definitely, there's a lot, a lot of interest in. It costs money, but I think what we're finding and what we know is it's really an amenity that people really value. I think to me, it's the diamond jewel of the city, it's Blue Heron Park. I mean, we have other nice parks, but that one seems to generate a lot, a lot of interest.
Okay, good. There's no further questions. We have two individuals that want to make public comment. Pam Thornhill, you're first, if you want. Okay, Annie Drager, you want to come up? You're first then. Pam will be second. Okay, for comments on agenda items, I'll allow about five minutes for each person. And welcome, Ms. Drager.
Hi. I'm here because about the master plan, I think it's wonderful what I've read. There is one problem, though. It's page five, or six, seven. If you'll, if you have a copy of the plan, you can see it's, it's the original Blue Heron map that was developed in 2016, I believe. And there was, a lot has happened since that map was, the, the plan was made for Blue Heron Park. So I want to show you the pollinator garden, which, if you look on the plan, would be eliminated by parking lot. And this is, this was not, when the plan was done originally by this, the master plan, they did not realize what they were going to, what was going to happen with the pollinator park. So I'm here to show you because we'd like to have this changed or eliminated. And so, okay, go, go ahead with it. Just, if you can turn around, you can see what, what we have.
We have it on our screens.
Yeah, the lights, you can't really see it, but this is our, our beautiful garden. And we had a fire, as you remember, and most of it was destroyed. So that was in 2020. And we, you'll see here the regeneration process and the enlargement that we made on the garden. And that's the N L, actually. And these are some of the people that helped to put the garden back. And, and this is the process that we went through in 2020 to regenerate and bring it back to life. So this is some pictures of us after working in the garden. Got a little dirt on us and, uh, we used some biodynamic treatments to help regenerate this, the garden. We added a lot of native plants. And, uh, the, the garden has flourished, uh, and it doesn't, you won't even recognize it from five years ago. And these final pictures after we get through, oh, I wanted to say too, this year we had the, uh, uh, Rotary Club come and here they are in this picture. They put in their peace pole. And again, we had another group of people coming to help, uh, in the garden and they chose that place because it is so beautiful and such a lovely area. So this is why, you know, I'm advocating for this map, uh, the original map for Blue Heron Park to be changed so that this, uh, beautiful garden can continue to do its job.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. And now Pam Thornhill.
Hi, I'm Pam Thornhill. I live on Hilsinger Road and I'm chairman of the, or chairperson of the Parks and Rec Committee. And, um, were you able to distribute?
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. My problem. Okay. Thank you very much.
So in there is the map that Annie was referring to that is, um, problematic for a lot of people. And I'll be addressing that. Um, a number of Phoenix residents have come before the Parks and Rec Committee regarding the map of Blue Heron Park included in the master plan. The map labeled page six, seven, June twenty twenty five, Blue Heron Park Master Plan entitled Blue Heron Conceptual, Concepts, Conceptual Design has caused concern in a number of groups that have been involved in the creation, restoration and enhancement of the pollinator garden. This map was created before the fire and shows parking spaces where the pollinator garden now stands. The preceding page lists recommendations for Blue Heron Park. People tend to assume that the map on the following page documents those recommendations. In fact, the map documents the twenty sixteen plan for Blue Heron Park before the Almeida fire. The Parks and Recreation Committee recommends that the map Blue Heron Conceptual Design be removed from the report and replaced by a current map of Blue Heron Park to avoid misinterpretation and confusion by those who are asked to evaluate and respond to this document. Are there any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pam. Okay, and I have, well, I believe, are you speaking on the same thing? Tiziana? Okay, please, come on up. Tiziana Elrovera is here to, uh, talk to us. Welcome.
I think.
Give you about five minutes like the others. Go ahead, please.
Um, so first of all, I'm here in support of the pollinator garden. I think that it brought together.
Could you state your name? Could you state your name and your address?
Yeah, Tiziana de Rovere, one one four Brick and Ridge Drive, Phoenixville. So I'm really in, uh, in favor and I would like to support that because that really brought different people from different belief system, from different, you know, in, on, on the spectrum together. Because we all can support the beauty of a garden. So in general, I would like to continue to expand the concept of gardens. There are all that have flowers because at this time in our, in our country and, and in this, in our region right now, we need something that calms the spirit. And to sit and to be in a garden in contact with nature is what comes the spirit and what brings, brings us together. So I am continuing to support gardens in general with flowers. And also I would like to to present also an additional idea. And that is to support the arts. How, and to have the concept that maybe we can also include sculptures and artistic uh, in expression of our soul. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay. Did you want to comment at all about the pollinator garden, uh, a little bit, please, uh, because of the the map? And, um, I think that was two thousand sixteen, correct?
Correct. Uh, so that was done as part of an outreach program. Um, and it was not part of the scope of this work that we're doing here. So as I mentioned before, there, there's a number of things in the plan that we checked off the box if it was done. But if it wasn't done, we left the recommendations in there because we didn't solicit that information. Um, what I will say though, just to correct the record is the Parks and Recreation Department did recommend approval as it's presented to you. Um, so, um, I just want to make sure that we understand that there was a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Committee and it did not include removing that map. Um, and, and the map, the map is like the other plans are conceptual in nature. And when we get to the point of doing any type of construction or going out for any bid, there will be additional public work that's done to refine that plan. We realized that there was a fire, that this plan was done in two thousand sixteen before the fire. We also realize in the two thousand sixteen plan that there's more need for more native space, um, in areas of the parking lot that wouldn't be disturbed. So, uh, there is thoughtfulness there around that. There's not an intent to remove without replacing or to, uh, or to get the public involved. Um, right now, what we're looking at is a plan that did not even ask the public what their opinion was really of that particular plan. Cause that was done just nine years ago. So, so I just want to make that clear. It's not that, it's not that we don't agree that we should reevaluate where parking is that that entire park area needs a revamp when it comes to parking in general, especially if it's going to be the economic driver that we want it to be with the band shell or with the community garden or with the outdoor programs or those types of things. They cannot function without parking. Um, but when we do that, the public will be involved and we will be taking those things into consideration and be hearing public comment. I don't think it's appropriate at this point to remove the map from the plan because it wasn't discussed to remove it and that was not the recommendation of the Parks Committee.
Yeah. In the future, if there is something where the parking needs to go in there, there is other lands inside within the park that a pollinator, native garden could be re, um, positioned.
I would imagine so. It's a, it's a, it's a big park and, and I think what we would probably do if that were the case and not saying that that is, but you would probably try to establish the, a newer part, a newer pollinator garden before you remove the one that you were going to remove. So again, not to say that it's going to be removed, but it, it is central to the, to the issue of parking there and that parking lot design is terrible as it is. And so we just don't know what that looks like now. And it's not fair to remove a plan that the public did participate in and back in two thousand sixteen without any further investigation.
Okay. Any other comments by anybody on council at all on this? Okay. If not, uh, I propose, will you consider a motion if you so desire? That's on page eleven.
I move, uh, to adopt a resolution one four, one one four three, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty five park master plan as recommended by the Phoenix Park and Recreation Committee.
Got a second here? All right. Thank you. Roll call.
Councillor Cambros?
Yes.
Councillor Switos?
Yes.
Councillor Chester?
Yes.
Councillor Vermillion?
Yes.
Councillor Shunk?
Yes.
Councillor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
I am so thankful for the pollinator garden and all that it's doing. And with the, um, the, uh, preschool that goes in there too, like I, that is absolutely needs to remain part, just where is, is good too.
All right. Then we're moving on to the next item, which is street banner policy. Mr. Moody, you want to come up and address that one?
Well, I'll just mention real quick, uh, that this is something that has come up recently and has come up from time to time in terms of using the, uh, our main street to hang, hang banners. And so what we've discovered is that it's the policy that's currently in place is in need of an update is based on on the costs and the coordination that CitySAT has to go through to, uh, make, to, uh, provide these banners. So, uh, did some work and came up with what we thought would work for for Phoenix in terms of, of, of what, what those, what that banner policy would like.
That's. Yeah, I'll keep this brief. The, the report is pretty, uh, straightforward. Uh, we're here just trying to get information, make sure we're on the right page. Make sure that this is something that the council does want us to continue to work on. We realize that there is a need for a program. Most cities do have some coordinated program to allow signage. Um, it's a little complicated in the sense that there are some constitutional issues that we have to make sure that we vet out and make sure we're not violating any, uh, any amendment, any constitutional, uh, freedom of speech issues or things that are not time, place and manner. Um, but what we've come up with is what most cities have. They have a cross-street banner and then they have their street pole banners. And so, uh, for some of you that were here and I guess you were all here except for maybe you, uh, uh, we adopted a street banner fee policy, kind of understanding what the costs were going to be to do this. Um, we don't have a way to hang the banner. So, um, we really needed to have a really structured way for us to be able to uh, take reservations for people to use the banner. Uh, we have to schedule that out. There are costs associated with that, trying to time all of that and make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. When we rent the scissor lift to lift it up, we want to be able to put the next sign up, those types of things. So I think it does a really good job of, of explaining like the process and the procedure for both. Uh, I, I don't have examples in there of what these banners look like, but I don't imagine we're going to have people flooding the community development department to do this because they're very expensive. Um, especially, uh, even a one-way banner is, is, is expensive, but to put a, you know, twenty-five foot banner up is not cheap. Uh, and to construct it the way that the wind will not destroy it is not cheap. Plus the fee is expensive because we have to pay a pretty high fee to rent the lift to do the work. So, uh, the street pole banner, um, program, um, you know, it's pretty straightforward. Um, again, community minded. Uh, again, I don't imagine that we will probably have a number of private citizens requesting to create banners for that. It's probably going to be more for chamber use. Chamber will follow these, these regulations as well to make sure that we have consistency um, in the signage. Um, and then, and then most importantly, uh, this is actually an amendment to the municipal code, not to the land development code. We're not making it a land development action. This is really just a policy that's going to have an application form, a procedure. Somebody comes and pays their fee, we review it, we hang their banner and, and we're done. And it's easier to amend to if we find that there's something that's not working right or that we need to change. We can do an amendment to the ordinance much easier than we can to the land development ordinance. So what, what you have here tonight is not a resolution to adopt. It's just kind of, there's, there is a motion at the end of the staff report to direct staff to continue to do the work. Um, I believe.
The others.
Um, so, yeah, so that's the, that's the goal here is just to make sure that there were no questions, make sure we were on the right page, we're tracking with what the council wants to do. And then, um, at the next available meeting, we'll bring back an ordinance that would adopt this into the municipal code.
Okay, questions? Anyone? Banner's not, not too expensive. It's pretty straight, pretty straightforward. And like he said, it's very expensive to, for a full banner. So, uh, I don't see many during the year just because of the cost, you know?
I mean, hopefully we'll see with some structure and some idea of what it costs to do and what we expect. Hopefully with some chamber support, we'll see more events coming up there to really attract people to Phoenix. Um, I mean, that's the, that's, the banner is the advertisement for the events really. And then, you know, the heart of Phoenix type stuff really is on the banner poles, right? That, you know, fall banners, the winter banners, that, you know, those types of things that somebody can take ownership of and, and establish that program. Sounds like a really good job for the chamber, but that's not what we're here to talk about.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have a question?
So are we, we're talking about like the, the banners that just are on one side of the street kind of thing. And then there's also one that goes across the street, right?
Yeah. So right out here, there's a pole that goes across the street. Um, we've hung banners out there before, very rarely.
Citywide yard sale.
Uh, yeah, yard sale sign had one. I mean, there was one for that. And then the street pole banners are just the one right now that just have the city of Phoenix.
Um, yeah. So like, maybe we, maybe it would be like Fermentopia or, um, or the homecoming parade is coming or.
Yeah, I think the, the, I will say the street pole banners are meant more for seasonal type activities. They, they have a longer uh, lifespan in the, in the, in the, uh, proposal that we're giving to you. The ban, the street banner is shorter term. So like if Fermentopia wanted to create a banner, they could buy their banner to the dimensions that we need to have. They could pay the fee, we would hang it up and then we would take it down for them and give it back to them.
Okay. Like I'm thinking of the ones in Ashland, you know, they have like the film festival and the chocolate festival or.
It's the same idea.
Same idea. Okay, great. Thanks.
Anyone else on banners? No? Okay. Well, on page two fifteen, there is a motion.
Can I redo any motion?
I can do that. Um, I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending the Phoenix Municipal Court adding chapter fifteen point twenty-five cross-street and light pole banners.
Okay, got a second?
Second half.
Okay, roll call.
Councillor Cambros?
Yes.
Councillor Switos?
Yes.
Councillor Chester?
Yes.
Councillor Vermillion?
Yes.
Councillor Shunk?
Yes.
And Councillor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're on to C, fence code research and possible amendments. Mr. Swanson?
Yeah, I think, I think last, if you recall our, our last meeting, we, we, we actually agreed to to move forward with the motion that's proposed. And in that process, we forgot to actually make that motion and approve it. So uh, we're coming back and saying, let's, let's move forward with, with what we agreed to and make it, uh, you know, make it. So we have it on record.
Well, look, is there any discussion at all? Sam, you may not need to.
No. It was just, it was just to make sure we had the direction, like, like Eric said, make sure, we forgot to hear the motion from the council.
Okay.
So.
All right. Uh, I move to direct staff to research how fencing is regulated on the Bear Creek Greenway. In other jurisdictions, review the existing fence code and prepare a recommendation for the planning commission and council's consideration.
One second. Thank you. You have a second? Okay, roll call.
Councillor Cambros? Councillor Switos?
Yes.
Councillor Chester?
Yes.
Councillor Vermillion?
Yes.
Councillor Shunk?
Yes.
And Councillor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, very good. We're on to D, uh, Parks and Recreation Committee, City Council Liaison Assignment. Did you want to start, Mr. Swanson? I've got comments, obviously.
Sure. I think, um, you know, traditionally the council has had someone be part of the, the commission in terms of attending. And then once they attend, they come back and kind of share what they learned or, you know, gave an update on the park commission activities. Um, you know, it is, it's a very active group. It's changing, uh, pretty dramatically over the last couple of months. You know, you have a lot of, uh, different folks, um, on, on that committee um, that want to look at other kinds of issues other than just events. And so there's a lot more. Seems like there's a lot more going on as you probably already gathered. So, um, the idea is that, you know, if, if there is a councillor who wants to sit in that position, you understand that you probably got, you know, a few meetings that you're going to be attending. If that doesn't work for the group, then I think there's also the option of. If that doesn't work for the group, then I think there's also the option of their chair coming in and maybe every few months giving an update on the activities. And of course, Rosa does the, does the minutes in video of those meetings. So if you want to keep updated on what's going on with the parks, you can, you can use those those as a way to provide you with the information. So I don't, that's kind of what we discuss. And so those are the two options.
Yeah, my comment wasn't, you know, I looked at the municipal code on this, and there's two things in here that the liaison is supposed to do. Would serve as the council liaison. Hold on here, let me get the exact word in here. Ensure public meeting laws are followed by the committee and report back to the city council on the business conducted. And my thoughts are, I don't think, you know, your job as a council, you want to go over there and just make sure they make the motion and so forth. Yeah, you know, I mean, initially, we have a new group and I understand they're going to have to learn that. But after a month or two, I don't think you want to sit there and go, well, you know, are they following the laws? They're going to follow the laws. And the other thing is on reporting back. I mean, Rosa has to do the minutes and you can read the minutes. Is there any councillor here that wants to be liaison? I don't want to take away your excitement from.
I have interest, but I have higher obligations that prevent me from going on a Thursday.
Right, right. And it's a Thursday night, so you can't do so, you know, I don't want to do it. No one wants to do it. So my proposal at this point, and I know we keep coming back to this ordinance all the time, we're going to address it again regarding the secretary here in a second, is that it makes most sense to me, right now, Parks and Recs Committee comes in in December, does an end-of-year report, which is great. We want to know what they're doing. But, and I know we have the new chair sitting here listening to this, but I would propose every three months coming in and just telling us what you're doing, you know, if if there's something that you really think we need to know beyond the minutes, which anybody on council can read after Rosa posts them. Me, that that makes the most sense is having somebody come in, unless you have another idea to deal with this, but.
Sometimes the the liaison would come back with opportunities to serve, saying if anybody would like to help with the Easter egg hunt, if anybody would like to help with that. Maybe that could be a special thing that, or maybe Rosa could bring that update if there was a need for volunteers in in those items.
I mean, that's important. I agree. Yeah, we'd like to get that feedback. And that that can also come from the chair. Or, you know, you can have a special email. Send me an email, say we need volunteers for such and such. So I think, to me, that that's the only solution I came up with. Go ahead. Do you have other ideas?
I was like, do our other committees have liaisons?
No.
Only the parks?
Yes.
And what is the purpose of that?
Well, to make sure they follow public meeting laws and report back the things, the two things I mentioned. That's it. That's all that's in there.
Okay, I I like the idea of a briefing from the parks people coming to us to explain to all of us what's going on quarterly. I think that's a good idea. Since we don't have anybody who's obviously able to do the liaison position, we should find another solution.
Okay, and you know, I, I was told some liaisons did better than others, you know, some people do a better job. And this way, we're getting the word directly from the chair. And, you know, any invitations for volunteers and so forth. I think that's, that's important. Mike, go ahead.
Okay, so all the other groups who are not concerned about them following public meetings.
I know. Yeah, that's it. Well, no, the point is, we have the budget committee, which is here, and we we manage that committee. And then, you know, the the other committee, Mr. Moody is there to to manage the planning commission and make sure they follow public meeting laws, and that's all we have.
So that could be in supervision.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I would be interested, but our son applied to be on it too. And so we've got one Shunk hopefully participating.
Okay, okay, understand. All right, anyway. So, Mr. Swanson, I mean, are we up to revising the ordinance again? That's what it looks like.
As far as the, I think right now we're having a discussion about the liaison position.
Yeah, the liaison. But I mean, yeah, we're going to address the committee, but then we're coming back.
And then we have, and our next, next item on the agenda is the one about the, what the duties of the secretary.
Because it's an ordinance, we have to read it twice.
Correct, yeah. So I think tonight is just really, if we have consensus, this is how we want to move forward. I think we can.
Okay, is there consensus?
Isn't it okay with Rosa if we're having?
Well.
You see her anyway?
Yeah, she's already, she's already doing it. And, you know, she used to talk to the chair and they have a process of making sure they follow the noticing and in working, you know, like I work with Al and Zach works with the planning chair to make sure we have an agenda that we're, you know, following, you know, so that's kind of what that's kind of what her role will be in terms of just, you know, assisting them and what they're, what they're working on.
Also, wouldn't like Rosa know the rules better than we would? Yeah, so I mean, like, I don't know that anybody's taught me the rules of meetings. So like, what I know if I oversee them correctly?
Well, then maybe that's why Rosa needs to do it.
I like that.
You've answered the question.
Yeah.
Well, then I'll, I think also I'll just mention, I think it's every chair, it's not necessarily a staff, but every chair has a responsibility to make sure they're following. Yeah, I think it's important that we're all in agreement as to what what's the correct way and what what needs to make sure. I mean, it's it's simple, but sometimes we just got to be really clear about how we, how we do these kind of things, just because we, you know, they serve a greater community and and they have an expectation of of those kind of requirements.
Any other comments before we go on? Then Swanson, you can consider what you want to do with the ordinance and based on.
So, so I think we're, we're, we've had that discussion. I think we've all provided input and we'll pass on, or they're already here to hear that. I don't think there's anything consensus that this is kind of what, we're not going to have a council liaison say. But we're going to do all these other things to keep them up to date. So I think that that conversation is done. The next one is the ordinance on the sec reading as a separate agenda item that talks about the role of the secretary Roosevelt with the, with the with with the Parks Commission. As you recall, last, at the last meeting, we had specifically an ordinance that was proposed that looked at providing for two out of town or within the school district zone, the person representatives, that part of the part of the ordinance was struck struck down. And then now we're, we're, we're just looking at the remaining portion of the ordinance that talks about the secretary's role. So I think, I think we're all in agreement. We can, unless you have some questions, we can move forward with the second reading, which would then be the adoption of that change in the, in our code or in our ordinances.
Anybody have any questions regarding the secretaries role? I think it's pretty clear.
I believe we also had a, we had a public hearing at the last meeting, so we're, we're, there's no, it's not necessarily.
For the second reading?
On page two twenty-two.
That the one?
That's the one.
Okay, I move approval on second reading by title only of ordinance ten forty-six in ordinance amending ordinance one zero zero one, section two point thirteen point zero eight zero and adding section two point one three point oh eight one relating to city recorder duties.
Second.
All right, welcome.
Counselor Cambros?
Yes.
Counselor Swetos?
Yes.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. We have no public hearings tonight. Before we go into executive session, I've got staff, oh, I think we did that. Fence code, yeah, we did the fence code. Yeah, I think you did. It was fast.
Wow.
Yeah, no, 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 it was very fast.
It was with the street ban? We did street banner and then fence code?
No, it was, it passed.
The, the street signs and then fence code.
Fence code research, yeah, was approved.
Oh, that was, oh, yes. Sorry, I was ready for my big conversation. You know, I just voted on that. Sorry.
No, you're, you're good.
Yeah.
We're good. Okay.
Yeah, the research, which is going to be a big conversation. I read that earlier, like, oh, we're going to spend a lot of time on fence code.
Yeah, well, that's coming later. That's coming later. Stand by on that. Okay, we're going to do staff reports before we do executive session per the agenda. We do not have a city attorney here tonight. We, Mr. Swanson and I are interviewing city attorneys later this month, and then there will be a selection and hopefully a new city attorney will start with the first city council meeting in August. Okay. Mr. Swanson, do you have any comments at this time?
Uh, just a couple of things. So hopefully you brought your calendars and you looked at the dates that we are proposing for the strategic planning, which is August fifteenth and sixteenth. On August fifteenth, that would be a Friday, one to five P M. And then the following day, the sixteenth would be an eight to twelve P M. So lots of coffee, maybe we will throw some fruit in, you know, I guess. But yeah, we want this to be a really, yeah.
How many people can make that date right now?
Which date?
It's, it's August, August the fifteenth and sixteenth. It's, it's a Friday, Saturday.
Both of? One to five on Friday. It's a long, it's split in two days, so we don't.
This is strategic planning. We have to make.
We have to attend both of them.
Yes.
It's part one, part two.
Okay, Nicole?
It's.
Say yes.
It's one to five on Friday and eight to twelve.
Oh, yes.
All right, Angie, you said yes.
I, I did say yes. Saturday is, is, I'm going to work on it.
We just won't go out to the ballgame. We'll be working that. Now, anyway. I say yes, we're coming down.
The July dates marked down, so I have clients scheduled now, but.
Is there any way you could, please?
I didn't know we had to be at both of them either.
Yes, both of them. There's too much work to do, just one.
No, I get it. I don't know, I'll have to like.
Okay, oh, you'll work on it. Okay, Virginia? Yes, Mike?
Saturday, absolutely. Friday, I can probably make it by three. I'm back on contract principally. So.
I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll accept that as a hundred percent because that's what we're, we're trying to get a hundred percent of the council. And when the July dates were proposed, we didn't get a hundred percent. So that's, that's kind of the.
I can try to squeeze it earlier as much as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday, August fifteenth from one to five P M. And August sixteenth, which is eight A M. to twelve P M.
Okay, Virgin? Yes, okay, good. You're putting it count. So you're.
I just have to get back to you.
Okay, everyone else is yes. We're going to move ahead with that.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I did want to, uh.
Yeah, because we.
As I, as I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, we wanted to give a quick update on the community outreach for the strategic plan. We've had a hundred and seventeen responses to the online survey. We conducted community meetings on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, and Saturday, June twenty-first. The, so, you know, so we attempted to, you know, have meetings, engage public. We had one specifically for Hispanic on the, on the twenty-first. So I think we're doing, doing what we can to outreach on this, on this on this, on this project. I think although the overall number of responses to the community survey, one seventeen, and the number of participants, community meetings, forty-one, has been fairly small. The information collected through this process has been extremely informative. So anyway, I'm just highlighting what the report that we presented and wanted to give you a quick update. This this was a memo that we put out on twenty-sixth, so it's relatively current information. I think moving forward with the actual, the council's strategic planning process will also generate more communication, also generate a lot more conversation about the strategic plan. So glad to see that we pretty close to nailing down dates because I think that's been kind of a challenge, you know, getting through the summer. So thank you for that.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I was hoping the numbers would be higher. Mike, you were talking about the numbers before, and these are even lower. And I don't know what else we can do. We, we reached out to people. Do you have any ideas about, you know?
It sounded pretty thorough. I mean, you do your best.
I know, I know.
Quite a few surveys before, and the numbers are low, but if you've got a strong feeling about something, you have the opportunity to speak up also.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, like you say, we're, we're trying.
I guess I can make one more Facebook post to keep them getting more people.
Whatever. Go ahead. Yeah, you won.
Feel it go.
Okay, okay. Anything else on strategic planning?
That's it. I was just, I just one other thing. I know there was some, there's been questions about the speed trailer and I wanted to give a quick update on that.
I like the chief. I've got some questions on it and some comments. And before he starts, I want to say, man, they're all over the place. I mean, they, they got me watching because they are really, you know, there's one car and then I see another car and I'm going, wow, you know, they're all over the place. And the weekly reports, the numbers on speeding, man. Yeah, you saw them go up to thirteen all of a sudden from two to thirteen. So, yeah, you're out there. There's no question about that. I guess two things. Give some feedback if you can on the survey and on the the trailer. What kind of data did you pick up?
The survey?
Yeah, there was a survey on Facebook.
Okay.
Or something, yeah, I think.
Yeah, he hasn't, he hasn't gotten me those numbers yet.
Okay, that's still so.
Yeah, still out there. So basically, as you all know, the speed trailer is out and about. We move it around quite a bit. The data so far is, I would say, pretty good as far as the first place we had it was in a area over off of Rose Street on the south end of Rose where we were getting a lot of complaints. And we found that there isn't so much of a problem over there as, as what was communicated to us. I think the average speed was, Zach, the average speed that that first spot was what? Twelve and a half miles an hour.
That was the one at the bottom of Rose before it pinched at that.
It's, yeah.
Okay, so. I think a lot of cars take it right there. They're not up to speed, isn't it? But I was waiting for skateboard and bicycle injuries because if I was a kid, I'd start at the top of Rose and see how quick I could get.
So the fastest speed there was twenty-seven, and that was you, right? Twenty-eight, and that was Zach testing.
Zach speeding.
We had him testing the, the trailer because that was the first, the first place we, we placed it. We placed it on the south end of Main Street here. The, the average speed was twenty-seven, which is pretty good if you think, okay, it's twenty-five, the average speed is twenty-seven, but then you think about, okay, average. So the top speed that it recorded in that section was fifty miles an hour. Also recorded forty-six cars going north. But we don't, we don't know for sure if it was forty-six that actually were, or if it was picking up the cars up at the top of the couple, because it does have a pretty good range. But so far, there isn't, we don't feel there's a huge speeding problem. There is a speeding problem. Everybody has a speeding problem. But we'll just keep moving around. And I ask any of you, if you have a suggestion where you want to see it, you know, reach out, shoot Eric an email, and then he'll let me know and we'll get it moved over there for the survey in that whatever area you request. I'm, I'm anxious to see when the school starts up again. We'll be placing it out in the speed, in the school zones quite a bit, just to kind of monitor what's going on in those areas, so.
Is there any, like, e-bikes are just like regular bikes when they travel in traffic, right? They don't have any special designation or anything like?
They are considered motorized vehicles.
They are motorized. Okay, like on the way here, I saw a woman on an e-bike going faster than the traffic, driving down the road.
Yeah, so when the e-bikes first came out, they were classified as bicycles. However, they've had to reclassify them because of the newer ones that have come out that can go over thirty-five, forty miles an hour.
Yeah, she was going fast. Because I mean, even on a bike, if you were going faster than twenty-five, that's still.
Yes.
You're not supposed to do that, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And I believe the state, the state legislature made some changes in that, this, in this session. And I, I believe the state, the state legislature made some changes in that, this, in this session as well.
We're just waiting for the final word to come down.
Is there a speed limit on the greenway?
No, but motorized vehicles are not authorized on the greenway. So there shouldn't.
Bikes are now considered motorized vehicles. So are e-bikes not allowed on the greenway?
They shouldn't be.
They, they shouldn't be allowed.
They should not be.
But.
If, if it has the ability to go over, I forget what the rule used to be, um, twenty-five, if they're able to go over twenty-five miles an hour, then they're not authorized on the greenway.
And is, nobody really patrols the greenway to stop people going too fast, though?
No.
Okay. Yeah, they have speed limit signs on the greenway? I don't think so. Hmm. It's something that maybe could be addressed now.
Mm-hmm. Well, your liaison with the greenway.
Wow.
We, you checked on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
You are.
Uh, chief, uh, how do like electric skateboards and that, that sit the same, the same way? Cause I watched an accident with someone on the skateboard. The, the driver didn't think they were coming that fast and.
Yeah, the legislature hasn't really approached the, the electric skateboards yet. However, um, oh, by the way, there's a major thunderstorm that's about to be here. Um,
Wow.
Um, basically, you know, it's just like non, non-motorized skateboard, you know, as, as a driver, if, if they, you know, somebody on a skateboard, just like somebody on a bike, somebody, you know, if they're coming down and it's a vehicle and they have the right of way, they're on a skateboard, they have the right of way.
So even if it would be the driver's fault, even if they were coming fast.
In, in that particular instance that you're talking about, yes, it was the driver's.
Driver's fault. Um, do you have any ideas? The people traveling the wrong way on, um, Main Street happens several times a week. I think when I am sitting in my salon, I watch them come and it's just, my clients go, whoa, and my god, it happens all the time. Is there any, you have any ideas of what, I know there's signage up, but people just.
You know, a, a lot of time it's, at least the ones that I've pulled over, um, you know, they're not locals. It's a lot of people from out of state. I pulled one over last week. Um, you know, somebody from California came off of First Street. They just weren't paying attention and boom.
Yeah, they turn around quickly.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, as far as I believe, I mean, we could, I don't know that it's necessary and I don't think it would help because by the time they saw it would be too late anyway. But, um, at all the intersections, they're all clearly marked.
Yeah, they are.
You know, I even had public works stick a sign out at Puck's Donuts across from Puck Donuts saying that.
That way, yeah.
Cause the, seems like the Puck's Donuts patrons like to.
I think that's probably.
Take that quick jaunt to try to get down First Street, but yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not to throw my wife under the bus, but people are overcoming that. She took a break. We've lived here ten years. I have some, she's ten times smarter than I am.
So, you know, the, these people that have, uh, the perception of speeding, like, you know, the, the couple that we talked to on Rose Street, the perception and the reality are not even close is what we're saying. And if we, you know, at some point need to go back to these people and say, here are the numbers, you know, it's not the city, it's the numbers.
Right.
And, you know, what, what is your?
I mean, it, it doesn't. It's not that I don't believe them for that one car that they specifically, you know? I'm, I'm sure that that vehicle does speed through there.
Mm-hmm.
But even the video that we watched when they showed the vehicle and then the sheriff's deputy.
Yeah.
They showed that one and they put the overlay and even when I was watching that video, I, I said to myself, so this sheriff's deputy is only doing like fifteen right there. That other car was probably only doing twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five maybe, you know?
Is it only show averages? Because, you know?
Yeah, no, it records all of them.
Okay. Well, then show it in intervals, like how many people are you stacking at thirty and forty, twenty and thirty?
Did that.
It does break all of it down.
Every single trip is.
Yeah.
Okay, that, does it, can it present the data in intervals? Because if, you know, the citizens are worried about it, if we presented it as data during a council meeting, it would be, you know, public record and we could access it now.
Yeah, we, we can do that. Um, Zach's my technical.
That's a good one.
We're on backup.
That makes you drop more different.
Zach was my technical expert.
Testing, testing. We still have audio and we're still zoomed. The lights just must have gone in.
This is our, this is our backup, right?
Zoom, are you, I want to see if they're still. Chris, can you talk if you're still there?